Tonight for this December 5th proceedings of the GRPS Board of Education. If you could please join me and stand for the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Before we take the roll, just FYI, if anyone wants to make public comment, we do have public comment cards at both tables as you enter the auditorium. If you do have a card completed, if you just hold it up, a staff person will get it and we'll call you down at the appropriate time. In lieu of that, Ms. Grant, if you could call the roll, please.
Yes, Ms. Lewis?
Present.
Reverend Mathias?
Present.
Ms. Shaki?
Present.
Mrs. Williams?
Present.
Dr. Baker?
Here.
Ms. Davis?
Here.
Dr. Flores?
Present.
Ms. Grant?
Present.
And President Ross?
Present.
And may I get a motion to approve this evening's agenda?
So moved, support.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed, same sign? There being none. We have an agenda and that will move us forward with our celebrations for tonight.
Great, so good evening, everyone. Happy Monday to everybody. Is this on?
It is. It didn't feel like it.
I hope everybody enjoyed the melodic sound of our staff notes. They always do just such a phenomenal job. These are staff members who represent both teaching, support staff, building leadership, and they are definitely songbirds. I'd like to invite Mr. Eric Harmson and Ms. Maggie Malone forward. They're going to share the board and superintendent holiday e-card.
Good evening, President Ross, Dr. Roby and distinguished board members. It's my pleasure to introduce our Director of Fine Arts and Shared Time, Maggie Malone, who is supremely talented and her leadership has on display today with the staff notes. Though I did hear the base section was a little quiet today. I was bummed I missed it, but those opportunities and one of Maggie's strengths is the opportunity she gives our staff and our scholars in the areas of fine arts. I'm so proud of how GRPS and all of you support and the foundation, Education Foundation supports the fine arts as a choir kid from Ottawa Hills High School. So thank you for that. And I also want to acknowledge our teachers, our fine arts teachers and other teachers who work so hard and always care about our scholars and bring the best in everything, but especially in fine arts. Maggie?
Thanks, Eric. It's a pleasure to be before you again, President Ross, Dr. Roby and prestigious board members. Again, this is the 10th card that I've had the privilege of participating in this year and it does not disappoint. We have another amazing performance by our singers. We, this year, our card song is by the Ottawa Hills Concert Choir under the direction of Mr. Eric Love, who is also AKA The Grinch. So they're under his tutelage. And Ms. Deborah El Perry, who is one of our amazing music teachers, she's at Coit Creative Arts Academy, but Deb also is a local business owner. She owns Joint Air Music Studios and Joint Air Music Productions. And she has been very generous with her time outside of school contributing to our scholars and to our team and to our district. So I just want to acknowledge them too.
Thank you.
And then we have amazing artwork. See all these amazing scholars over here? I'm so excited. All right, but you're not here to hear about that. Let's get to what we're here for and then we'll talk about the amazing artists afterwards. And without further ado, this is our GRPS holiday card, 2022.
All the weather outside is frightful, but the fire is all I know. And since there's no place to go, let us know, let us know, let us know. Doesn't show signs of stopping, and I lost some more for popping. The lights are turning way down low. Let us know, let us know, let us know. We finally kiss goodbye, how I hate going out in storm. But if you really love me, it's all that I'm holding on anymore. The fire is slowly dying, and my tears are still a burning. But as long as you love me, so, let us know, let us know, let us know. All the weather outside is frightful, but the fire is all I know. And since there's no place to go, let us know, let us know, let us know. Doesn't show signs of stopping, and I lost some more for popping. The lights are turning way down low. Let us know, let us know, let us know. We finally kiss goodbye, how I hate going out in storm. But if you really love me, it's all that I'm holding on anymore. The fire is slowly dying, and my tears are still a burning. But as long as you love me, so, let us know, let us know, let us know.
And if your art was in the card, would you please stand so we could acknowledge you? Awesome. Congratulations. We have certificates for all of our student artists and we will be happy to get those to you. I'm not sure if we want to do a photo with all these amazing artists. Okay, can we follow the leader, guys? Can you follow me? Turn this way. Yep.
All right, guys, can you look at me? On three. One, two, three. Awesome.
And also while we're packing up, the students were amazing, but I also want to acknowledge our amazing visual arts teachers who helped the students get their work produced. And I also want to thank Dan Vantil, our Fine Arts Coordinator, who did an excellent job putting that video together. So thank you, Dan. And if you're an art teacher, will you stand up? Great job, everybody. Thank you so much. Great job.
Thank you, young people. We certainly appreciate your art. Our next celebration, as you're transitioning, Mr. Beresford and the Kiwanis group, come on down.
Yes, it is. Right here.
Thank you.
Can I get our take? Please.
Actually, I use.
Good evening, Dr. Roby, President Ross and board. This evening, I have the honor of bringing forth this annual celebration from an extremely generous organization of the Kiwanis for our third graders that happens every year. Tonight, I have Peter Satterweight, the Kiwanis lead on the special project, and then also Golden K president, Forrest Hoop. So I'll turn it over to them to explain a little bit.
Thank you. Thank you, Superintendent Roby and President Ross and board members. This is the 16th year that the Kiwanis, the Golden K Kiwanis Club, the Kiwanis Club of Grand Rapids and cooperating with the Key Club at Grand Valley State University have been able to provide dictionaries to those entering third grade in the Grand Rapids public school. And Peter told me that we've given, provided over 1,100 dictionaries over the last 16 years.
No, I remember much.
1,100 this year. Excuse me. I'm getting confused. And I had a chance of being in a couple of classrooms last Tuesday as we presented these and to see the excitement of the third graders as they started looking through the, not only the dictionary, but the gazetteer in the back and their, just their excitement. For some of those young children, this might have been one of the first books they've ever owned. And we just, I just encouraged each one of them to use it wisely and to grow into the full potential that they have. So on behalf of the Golden K Kiwanis Club of Grand Rapids and the Grand Rapids Kiwanis Club and the Circle K Key Club, we present these dictionaries to be shared with the third graders. And each one of them has a little faceplate with their own name on them. So we kept reminding them that these were theirs to use not only this year, but through their school year. So on behalf of the Kiwanis Clubs, we present those dictionaries. Peter, you want to add anything?
Only thing I'd like to add is the support that we've always received from the superintendent, Superintendent Dr. Roby. It's so a pleasure to have you. Go ahead and continue the project. And the lady who assisted us this year, Rosemary Reed, she came back from retirement and assisted, and it was gracious of her to do that. I know she came back at your behest, but the fact is, she's a wonderful lady who helped us out. And it was kind of nice because she retired when Dr. Taylor started this project 16 years ago. And we did send, she got a picture of Dr. Taylor with our president at that time, who was Robert Burns. And the North Club was, which, as the years went over, sort of picked up all the other clubs because we've lost members and things like that. And now they're just called Kiwanis of Grand Rapids. And so it's a great pleasure, President Ross, and to have this opportunity to reach out and touch our community. And we thank both of you.
Thank you.
And then we'd like to leave you with a little gratitude. So Rose has been working over the last month as these dictionaries hit the third grade classrooms to build a file folder full of GRPS gratitude. And we have letters and cards and photos from across our third grade classrooms. So I'd like you both to take these back to all the Kiwanis groups and share them. This one is, it just brings a smile to me. Thank you, dear Kiwanis Club. Thank you so much for this dictionary. I've been wanting a dictionary for my bedroom and now I have one. I will use it to better understand big words. Sometimes I just like to see if I can find words for fun. Thank you, Rosie. So I have a file folder full of GRPS gratitude for you gentlemen.
And that's what makes the project so, so meaningful is to see reaching out to our young students and hopefully inspiring them to continue to grow and develop. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good deal.
And that brings us to a report of our scholar representatives. Ms. Mohammed, Mr. Leggett, I don't know if one of you want to go first?
I'll go first. So November 22nd, I believe, we had a senior summit at GRPS University. I seen some of you there. It was really fun. We learned a lot of new things. There are lots of different workshops there and there are fun prizes given at the end. So that was fun to attend. And I can't wait for the field day in the spring. Also, two GRPS scholars are semifinals for the Coca-Cola Scholar Foundation. It's a nationally recognized scholarship, so that's a big honor, I guess. Thank you.
Okay, so the superintendent student advisory council volunteered at Kid Food Basket and we packaged food items. We met the founder and CEO of Kid Food Basket. Then also on the same night, like, we had a food, we had a mobile food pantry on the 30th and we also have exams coming up next week. Yeah.
Thank you both. That transitioned us to public comment for board agenda items. I don't know, do we have any for board agenda items? Yeah, Lex, we do have one for the facility master plan. I guess it's related to that. So we'll go ahead and call that down. Mr. Eric Brown, you come on down. Just remind you, as you make your way, sir, board comments are limited to three minutes. We'll keep the time on our end, so don't worry about that. But just if I give you enough to wrap up, that is why. And unfortunately, there won't be any direct reply to your comment, but please, we'll go ahead and chat off. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't think I need to hold three minutes anyway, so we'll be good on that. My name is Eric Brown, president and CEO of Urban League of West Michigan. And education is one of our pillars. And I'm just here tonight to say that I do support any recommendations that were made, the seven recommendations for the facilities master plan. We just firmly believe that they agree with the decision-making criteria that you guys are using for the facilities, regarding the facilities. And we're, we also believe that the tools that inform decision-making were also used in this, all seven recommendations. We think these are, it's a great opportunity. Did you start the time, Mr. President? We believe it's going to give an opportunity for the district to repurpose resources to be able to provide equitable education for students throughout the district, those students that, who are not receiving equitable education at this time. So we are in support of the plan as it was presented and that's really all we had to say.
Well, thank you. All right. Appreciate you. The rest of our public comment, we'll get at the end of our meeting. For those who did fill out public comment cards, but that takes us to our secretary's report. Ms. Grant, do we have a report for tonight?
We do. We have a committee meeting update. The academic achievement committee will meet Wednesday, December 7th at 5:00 PM here in the auditorium.
Thank you. And committee chair updates. Oh, go ahead, sir.
It comes to my attention that the mics are not working.
Okay, I was wondering. You can't hear? Yeah.
Yeah, I think our mics need some attention. As we navigate that, that we do have our committee chair updates.
You just have to speak for all of us.
Oh, I have to speak for everyone?
Oh, indeed. I got nothing.
You got nothing? Sure. Use your mom voice.
It's a short report. So the finance committee met just, oh my goodness, last week, I think it is, and conducted normal business for the finance committee. So moved forward, the purchasing agenda that's on the agenda this evening for approval. Approved our annual summer school property tax resolution, as well as our annual banking and investment resolutions. No changes there. And we accepted and recommended for approval three grants from three great partners in our community, Amplify GR, Coldwell Banker, Schmidt Realtors, and Fifth Third Young Bankers Club.
All right. Well, thank you very much. That brings us to our superintendent's report.
Can you hear me? Oh, you can hear me? Okay. I'm going to invite down Ms. Bridget Chaney, Mrs. Bridget Chaney and Ms. Stephanie Andrews to give a GRPS foundation update.
Good evening, President Ross, Dr. Roby, Board of Education. I'm very excited to see all of you that are here and excited to help in the new class that's coming in for the next four years too. So I just want to share with you guys just a couple of short things. Obviously, this next year is a big year for the foundation because we are celebrating our 30th anniversary. So there'll be a lot of new things that we're going to be highlighting this next year, as well as showcasing all the work that we have done in collaboration for the past 30 years. So excited to be sharing alumni stories over 30 years, as well as the work that we have done all together and the work that we have done to raise. And we continue to work on what is the next 30 years for us. One of the things that we will be showcasing is that we hope to, in the next 10 years, launch an endowment for the foundations that we can make sure that our scholars have everything that they need to continue to do this amazing work that you guys are all here to do and to make sure that we are leveling the playing field for everybody. I also want to share that Turkey Trot raised over $41,000 to the previous year above and beyond. So that is amazing, amazing work. We had more than 4,600 runners and it was really awesome to see Dr. Roby out there walking with us and so many of you board members as well. Oh, all right. Sorry. All right, sorry. She told me, she told me she was walking, so I'm just going to say that at the meeting. So no, that's great. So thank you all for participating and being huge supporters of this for the past 30 years and we've heard so many great things. One of the other two things that I want to share with you is that our adoptive school program is a pilot program that we had started. And actually, it was brought to my attention that 30 years ago, this was one of the ideas that was founded with consultants to actually kick off the foundation. And so we have Huntington Bank, as well as Amway, that have adopted schools to help fund the principal's fund. That's one of the key components that helps fill basic needs for our schools across the district. And it's one of the things that we need to make sure that we, especially as the winter months get colder, one of the main things that we fund are boots, hats, mittens, eyeglasses, everything else that you can think of that our kids need to be successful. Because as Dr. Roby has said, is our child, if our child, our children are cold in the classroom, they are not going to be able to learn. And we want to make sure that they are warm enough to go outside and get that respite that they need during the recess, as well as to come back in and learn. So, and then the final thing is, we are going to be looking for two GRPS interns for the summer. So as we are, I just want to start here by planting those seeds, especially with our scholar group and everyone else. If you can think of some GRPS students, we are going to be putting out applications so that we can have interns in our program that we hope to eventually someday hire and continue to grow our work. So thank you so much for all of your support this year.
Well, thank you. Absolutely.
Thank you both.
Thank you very much. So that moves us to our facilities master plan update.
And so I'm just going to do a very general overview of the update related to our facilities master plan. As you know, we have been engaged in a process most of 2022 and that has included over 6,000 different conversations, survey, data points, lunch and learns, small group, focus group sessions. And so we have a very comprehensive, full report related to our facilities master plan. Our board has been extremely involved in this process along the way, including deciding on the seven recommendations that you'll hear later that will come before the board for a vote, as well as ensuring that we align this vote to our strategic plan and our decision-making processes to ensure that we are looking for the overall health and growth of GRPS, not only for today, but for the future. And so we do have a comprehensive summary that will be made available to our larger community. And the board has an initial draft of the document, but we will also make this available on our website so that people who want to take a look as to what has been done and what the process has been along the way, they will have that information. And we look to do that hopefully by the end of this week. And with that, that concludes my report.
All right. Thank you. That takes us to our action items. Our first action item is the superintendent's evaluation. For the general public, we just had a closed session regarding the superintendent's evaluation. We did come to a consensus rating for that evaluation and I'm looking for a motion to support the evaluation of highly effective.
So moved.
Yes.
Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Ms. Shaki?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant, yes. President Ross?
Yes.
And our next action item is the facilities master plan recommendations. I know we're all familiar with them, but just for the general public, I will reread the seven recommendations. Although, as Dr. Roby alluded to, the full report will be available on the webpage. But we do have seven recommendations. I will emphasize these are recommendations to set the path moving forward. Again, the first one is to ensure sustainability and align with the strategic plan by aiming for an average 75% utilization across the district with an emphasis on elementary and middle school grade levels by 2032. The second recommendation is enrollments and utilization rates to be assessed annually to ensure that the facilities master plan, strategic plan and academic plan implementations are improving measurable strategic outcomes. The third recommendation is relocation of scholars and staff to be implemented to preserve programs, prioritize equitable access and improve learning environments of our schools. Fourth recommendation is to be responsive and transparent with our community by producing a facilities master plan calendar that includes continual stakeholder engagement and communication milestones on a regular basis. Number five is provide continuation of funding for the implementation of the facilities master plan through a capital program initiated in November 2023. Six, use district assets for community benefit by seeking out partnership opportunities for vacated schools and sites. Once program replacements are identified, in these partnerships, GRPS will prioritize property ownership with future asset decisions. Seven, reduce current operating costs and resource inefficiencies by leveling Kensington and reducing financial responsibility for Alexander during fiscal year 2023. The primary reduction strategy will be establishing an agreement that absolves the district of property maintenance costs, but maintains property ownership with future asset decisions. So those are the seven. But I do want to point out in particular with number seven, think about what I read for number six, that we are seeking out partnerships, opportunities for vacated schools and sites. When we say leveling Kensington, we're considering that to be a part of that opportunity for partnerships. So again, while we didn't change the recommendation language, there will be some work on our behalf to establish a method to receive those partnership opportunities in regards to Kensington. So I just wanted to kind of review those for everyone and see if there are any comments or questions before we call for a vote.
Yes, I just want to have some clarification as to.
They're barely picking it up.
Okay. Just clarification on what that community process will be as it relates to Kensington. I know that Dr. Roby, you discussed an RFP process. Okay, go ahead.
Sure.
Okay. And so what we've talked about, and this is what the board will have to decide during an upcoming work session, creating a discussion of a response for usage. And then that includes reviewing of board policy for the marketing criteria and then deciding, along with the seven recommendations and the district criteria for realigning facilities, making sure all of those things are aligned. And so just high level, next week, the discussion of the response for usage policy, or excuse me, process, review of that decision-making criteria, strategic plan and the seven recommendations, and then open up the process for the response for usage so that the community would have between 1216 and 116 2023 to say, this is what we'd like to do with that particular property. And then the board would be able to decide if it fit into their decision-making criteria as well as the policies that have been set forward already in our board recommendations or our board policy. or our board policies.
So we will discuss that criteria next Monday. And you said the dates are 1216 to 116?
These are, yeah, 1216, we talked about a 30-day window. So we would announce what that would look like. We have a draft of what that looks like that we'll share with our board so that you can advise on that. And so 1216 2022 through 116 2023, where it would be an open process for people who are interested in that particular site to say, this is how we'd like to use it. So it would be about a 30-day window.
Well, we can discuss this next week. I would, I'll request a longer period than that because we're going to lose two weeks at Christmas, so with the holidays, so.
This is just a.
But just, yeah, this is something, but I just want to make it clear because I have talked about that publicly, that I want to make sure that there's a process in place. So that's, that's open.
Anything else, anyone? There being none, may I get a motion to approve the seven recommendations for the facilities master plan?
So moved.
Support.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Matthias?
Yes.
Ms. Shaki?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant, yes. President Ross?
Yes. And that brings us to our next action item, the purchasing agenda. That was in your packet. Are there any questions about anything on the purchasing agenda? There being none, is there a motion to approve the purchasing agenda?
Moved.
Support.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Matthias?
Yes.
Ms. Shaki?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant, yes. President Ross?
Yes. And in the finance committee update, Ms. Shaki mentioned the annual summer school property tax resolution. Do we have any other questions about that? Not, may I get a motion to approve the annual summer school property tax resolution 2023?
So moved.
Support.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Matthias?
Yes.
Ms. Shaki?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant, yes. President Ross?
Yes. And the last action item is the banking and investment resolution for 2023. Any, may I get a motion to approve that?
Motion for approval?
Support.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Matthias?
Yes.
Ms. Shaki?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant, yes. President Ross?
Yes. And then finally, we do have our consent agenda grouping.
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Support.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Matthias?
Yes.
Ms. Shaki?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
And President Ross?
Yes. All right. So we have a board president announcements, a couple of things I want to speak to. Also, we do have a couple of proclamations, I believe, that we didn't have. I guess, is this one of them?
No.
South High, who's that handsome guy?
Dr. Baker, he said it looks like you. This is actually Gerald R. Ford.
But no. But yeah, we do have, do you have some?
Yes.
Mr. Hendricks wants to come on down? You want to make your comments?
Yeah, so, you know, as we kind of come into a close for, oh, is this a script for me?
It's not the script. He's going to read them.
Oh, okay, got you, got you. No, I just wanted to, you know, as Mr. Hendricks makes his way to the table, please go ahead, Mr. Hendricks. Just really think I'd be remiss as we kind of close our last sort of large meeting for the year to not acknowledge the great work of Dr. Tony Baker, Dr. Jose Flores, Ms. Christian Grant, and, you know, I'm not missing anyone, am I?
Reverend Matthias?
Reverend Matthias, I am so sorry, Reverend Matthias. That's not, that's, that's, don't take it personal. That's the second brain fart I had today where I forgot someone. So totally not, totally not on you. So, but no, really, as you, as we close, I guess, serving with the four of you, we just thought it was really appropriate to acknowledge your, your great work and publicly allow the district to recognize you with some resolutions to support the great work you've done over the year. So, Mr. Hendricks, please.
Yes, thank you. In my short time here, it's been an honor to work with all of you, so excited to read these. Whereas Dr. Tony Baker was appointed to the Grand Rapids Board of Education to serve July 1, 2008, through June 30 of 2009, to fill the remaining term vacated by Mr. Jim Brink, Dr. Baker was elected to three terms, July 1, 2009, through December 31, 2014, which included an extended six months to accommodate the change in school board election law, January 2015 through December 31, 2018, and January 1, 2019, through December 31 of 2022. And whereas Dr. Baker's years of service on the Grand Rapids Board of Education is 13 and a half years upon the completion of his second term. And whereas Dr. Baker also served on education committee and as chairperson for that committee, finance committee and as chairperson of that committee, legislative committee and as chairperson of that committee, academic achievement committee and as chairperson of that committee, city board liaison committee and as co-chair of that committee, ad hoc superintendent evaluation committee, ad hoc superintendent transition planning committee and as chairperson of that committee, conference of the committee chairs, ad hoc strategic planning RFP committee and as chairperson of that committee. And whereas Dr. Baker served in many leadership roles during his service on the board as vice president, treasurer, and president, he also served as KISD grassroots legislative committee and the board representative on the Student Advancement Foundation. And whereas Dr. Baker was instrumental in creating the model that became the Grand Rapids Public Museum School, he was an advocate for to college through college, a program to support underrepresented scholars, providing them with supports to graduate from their higher education program. And he also championed the teacher academy at Innovation Central to support underrepresented groups with a pipeline to become a teacher. And whereas Dr. Baker contributed to the success of the Grand Rapids Board of Education by providing his knowledge and expertise in a forthright manner during discussions and deliberations, demonstrating his commitment to all scholars of the Grand Rapids Public Schools. Now therefore, it be resolved, be it resolved, that the members of the Grand Rapids Board of Education and Superintendent Dr. Lidrian Roby, on behalf of the Grand Rapids Public Schools, do hereby congratulate and commend Dr. Tony Baker for his years of service to the school district and the scholars of Grand Rapids and wish him all the best in his future endeavors. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be presented to Dr. Baker and a copy be placed on file with the board secretary. The Board of Education of the Grand Rapids Public Schools. Dr. Jose Flores. Whereas Dr. Jose Flores was elected to serve on the board, the Grand Rapids Board of Education, for two terms, January 1, 2015, through December 31, 2018, and January 1, 2019, through December 31, 2022. And whereas Dr. Flores's years of service on the Grand Rapids Board of Education is eight years upon the completion of his second term. And whereas Dr. Flores also served on finance committee and the policy committee. And whereas Dr. Flores is a champion for authentic scholar voice and an advocate for teachers, he has been a passionate representative for his constituents. And whereas Dr. Flores contributed to the success of the Grand Rapids Board of Education by providing his knowledge and expertise in a forthright manner during discussions and deliberations, demonstrating his commitment to all scholars of the Grand Rapids Public Schools. Now therefore, be it resolved, that the members of the Grand Rapids Board of Education and Superintendent Dr. Lidrian Roby, on behalf of the Grand Rapids Public Schools, do hereby congratulate and commend Dr. Flores for his years of service to our school district and the scholars of Grand Rapids, and we wish him all of the best in his future endeavors. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be presented to Dr. Flores and a copy be placed on file with the board secretary. Sign the Board of Education of the Grand Rapids Public Schools. Ms. Christian Grant. Whereas Ms. Christian Grant was elected to serve on the Grand Rapids Board of Education for two terms, January 1, 2017, through December 31, 2020, and January 1, 2021, through December 31, 2024. And whereas Ms. Grant's years of service on the Grand Rapids Board of Education is approximately six years upon her resignation. And whereas Ms. Grant also served on the finance committee, the ad hoc superintendent search committee, the city board liaison committee as co-chair, conference of the committee chairs and as chairperson of that committee, legislative committee as chairperson, academic achievement committee, ad hoc strategic planning RFP committee, and the ad hoc facilities committee. And whereas Ms. Grant served in the following leadership roles during her service on the board as secretary and president. And whereas through Mrs. Grant's leadership, there were two superintendent searches which culminated in hiring Dr. Lidrian Roby. Ms. Grant's passion is scholars, and her love for Grand Rapids is evident. She also has this distinction of leading the school board during a pandemic. And whereas Ms. Grant contributed to the success of the Grand Rapids Board of Education by providing her knowledge and expertise in a forthright manner during discussions and deliberations, demonstrating her commitment to all scholars of the Grand Rapids Public Schools. Now therefore, be it resolved, that the members of the Grand Rapids Board of Education and Superintendent Dr. Lidrian Roby, on behalf of the Grand Rapids Public Schools, do hereby congratulate and commend Ms. Grant for her years of service to the school district and the scholars of Grand Rapids, and we wish her all of the best in her future endeavors. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be presented to Ms. Grant and a copy be placed on file with the board secretary. Sign the Board of Education of the Grand Rapids Public Schools. Reverend John Matthias. Whereas Reverend John Matthias was appointed to the Grand Rapids Board of Education on July 15, 2013, to fill the remainder of the term vacated by Ms. Sinida Lanier through December 31, 2014, Reverend Matthias was elected to two terms, January 1, 2015, through December 31, 2018, and January 1, 2019, through December 31, 2022. And whereas Reverend Matthias's years of service on the Grand Rapids Board of Education is nine and a half years upon completion of his second term. And whereas Reverend Matthias also served on the finance committee as chairperson, academic achievement committee as chairperson, legislative committee as chairperson, ad hoc strategic planning RFP committee, and the city board liaison committee. And whereas Reverend Matthias served in the following leadership roles during his service on the board as secretary and treasurer. And whereas Reverend Matthias championed for social and emotional supports being provided to scholars and was concerned for parents to have the tools they needed to support scholars, he looked for data to support growth and achievement and was a voice for his constituents. And whereas Reverend Matthias contributed to the success of the Grand Rapids Board of Education by providing his knowledge and expertise in a forthright manner during discussions and deliberations, demonstrating his commitment to all scholars of the Grand Rapids Public Schools. Now therefore, be it resolved, that the members of the Grand Rapids Board of Education and Superintendent Dr. Lidrian Roby, on behalf of the Grand Rapids Public Schools, do hereby congratulate and commend Reverend Matthias for his years of service to the school district and the scholars of Grand Rapids, and wish him all of the best in his future endeavors. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be presented to Reverend Matthias and a copy be placed on file with the board secretary. Sign the Board of Education of the Grand Rapids Public Schools.
Well, I'm actually strangely a little emotional. Going to miss the four of you for sure. But I guess I'll say some of that for our closing comments. That is a good transition, though. I do want to have a quick discussion on, well, honestly, hopefully a quick discussion on the how we feel. These large shoes here to my left, figuratively, of course. You know, with the appointment process, you do have a small packet at your, at your desk, at your seats there that, and this is based on a couple of things. One, our board policy, board policy 1170 that outlines what we do when there is a vacancy. And just for the, and then also, we have a, some board criteria that we use. The last time we had a situation where we had to fill a vacancy is when we appointed Ms. Shaki to the board, about six years ago, I guess now, right? So, so again, you know, reflecting on that process, it seemed like that process resulted us in a fabulous board member. So again, that's not to say that process was perfect, but that's what we use as a foundation to move us forward with the selection process for, to fill Ms. Grant's seat. So I guess, so I'm really trying to draw your attention to for this. You don't have this?
Sent to us electronically.
Oh, it was sent to you electronically. I'm so sorry. Yeah, I want to, you want to pull it up quickly then?
So this is the board policy you're referring to?
Well, the board policy is board policy 1170. Yep. So that's, that's first, and then that board policy. It does say that through public announcements, we will be, we will make known the vacancy has occurred and that those persons interested in being considered for appointment should, you know, should send in notification. We say that the board will establish the criteria to make the appointment and that the full board will, or a committee, will review and screen applicants to determine which candidates should be considered for appointment and that the, those candidates would then be screened further through an interview by the full board and public session. And then there will be a vote of the majority, there will be a vote by the board to determine the majority of who those will be elected, appointed, and serving moving forward. So those five sort of points are outlined in policy 1170. So there's really not much opportunity to do anything different, considering what the policy outlines. However, we do have opportunity to finalize the criteria, and what you hopefully are looking at at this point are the criteria that we established as a board when Ms. Shaki was appointed. So then we did say that criteria that we thought was important was an individual having a policy analysis slash critical thinking, demonstrating a value of diversity and inclusion, someone who could bring a new perspective to the board, meaning maybe a perspective that is possibly underrepresented on the board currently, someone with a connection, a familiarity for GRPS and has a belief in public education, someone that was a team player, has a leadership qualities and a collaborative, a spirit of collaboration, and someone that had a history of community involvement or in educational advocacy. And then the final criteria that we established then was understanding the factors related to academic achievement. So those were the seven criteria that we used when we screened candidates during the last appointment process. And it's coming upon our board to decide if these seven are sufficient, appropriate, or do we want to add, subtract, whatever the case, as far as that criteria is concerned. So that was the primary conversation I wanted to have this evening is determining what we want our criteria to be. And at this point, does everyone have it? No?
We have the policy. We don't have.
Well, why don't you share that for a bit here?
Mr. President, based on the fact that we use these criteria and ended up with Ms. Shaki, I think we should use the same one. So I move that we accept this criteria for candidate selection.
Well, there is only one, Ms. Shaki, though.
That's true.
Apparently, we have a motion on the floor, but I could hope we could have a little bit more.
You for your review?
Thank you.
In your text message, if you haven't seen it.
Would you rescind your motion?
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
For now.
My question is, is there anything additional that should, I think that is all amazing criteria, but A, the full board is just, just now seeing the criteria. That's what I'm saying. Like, my question is if there's something additional that, that should be added. And I don't have an addition to make.
She just sent it to you, too, though, if you want to read it.
Yes, no, I've.
Got you. Very nice. So, so you don't necessarily have something you want to. So you don't necessarily have something you want to add, but you're calling a question.
Right, I'm saying that that would be my question for my colleagues.
Fair enough. So in addition to the seven, does anyone feel incumbent to add something or remove something, substitute something? Or along the lines of what Ms. Downs Lewis offered, she thinks these are thorough and sufficient?
So I will move that again.
Well, actually, I would, under point number two, it says demonstrates values of diversity and inclusion. I would include equity.
Okay. Any other thoughts? Well, maybe you do, go ahead.
Maybe, maybe this time?
Perhaps deviate a little bit from the process. And when I raised the question earlier today, I raised the question of is there a policy that relates to the appointment of an individual? Because I was of the mind that, and still am of the mind, that we ought to consider the voter will from our previous election that was within the past 30 days when we went to the polls and the Grand Rapids community spoke by way of casting their votes. And I think that there should be consideration given to perhaps modifying this policy and make it possible for us to look at the top vote getters that would fall within the six seats that we have available as opposed to the five now that we are presented with a new resignation. And if it does not prevail today, I think the altruistic application of democracy requires us to look at voter will. And when voters go to the polls, they select those who they want to represent us. And the fact that we don't have weighted values with that, we still have candidates ranked in order that won the seats that were available. And so my suggestion, should this continue forward, is that we look at this policy and review it and change it, modify it. And I would be in favor of tabling this process that we have until that policy idea could be discussed. And whether I get a second to that motion, I'd really like to be able to offer that for improvement of this system in the interest of fairness, equity, and representation, and the preservation of a democracy or a democratic system that I think needs to be respected.
I have a quick comment to that. And I do believe voter voice is important. I think you're expanding the definition of the vote that was taken. Voters did not vote on six seats. If they had, the data could be completely different. So you're saying that a data set that was not meant for this, you'd like to apply to this. That's not fair or equitable. I do, you know, say that the next board looking forward should, you know, take a look at this process, but where that's not what that data was for. So to say that that's the true and real data is not correct. Voters went to the poll and chose five people. That's who they chose. They didn't choose six. And so if they had have chosen six seats, the data may have looked very different because they would have been choosing that other person. Now we're taking a small group of the people who chose one person when others didn't and applying that to the full set. So I just want to share that because you keep speaking to it as if it's the whole voter will and it's not.
Fair enough. Well, and I will say, Dr. Flores, I do understand your reasoning and I do think it very well may be something for us to consider as far as amending this policy moving forward. I don't think in the timeframe that we have, we're able to really engage in a conversation about amending the policy. And I think even with that, we have other policies that require us to have first, second, third readings before a policy is changed. And just from a calendar perspective, we have to name an appointment within 30 days and with the, you know, the break and whatnot, I just don't think it's reasonable to say we can change this policy in time to then still get an appointment in place. But I do think your point is valid from the standpoint of we may want to consider changing this policy moving forward. I'm not going to get into a deliberative conversation of what I think the changes could be, but I do think you have a point there. But for this particular time and place, I think we are beholden to the current policy language and beholden to the process that we've announced publicly. Now, of course, anyone who's interested can, you know, throw their name in the hat for that and I'm sure, you know, you will make your voice heard when the time comes in that regard as well. So, but I do appreciate your perspective for sure. I guess aside from that though, unless you want to offer anything else about that, I wanted to drill into the, back to the criteria. So we do have a recommendation to add equity to bullet point two. Any other additions to the criteria or adjustments, subtractions, or anything? Yes. So I guess there being none. Sounds like we have someone who wanted to make a motion for the current criteria.
Yes, again, I would move to accept the criteria with the addition of Mrs. Williams' equity.
Okay.
Second.
All right, Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Matias?
Yes.
Ms. Shaki?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant? Yes. President Ross?
Yes. Okay, so we have our criteria and for the general public, there was announcement made. If anyone is interested in seeking the final two years of the seat that Ms. Grant currently holds, you can, well, actually, I probably should be on our webpage too, right, sooner or later here. But thank you. So yeah, we will be accepting applicants until noon this Saturday, December 10th. We ask that those be submitted electronically to boeapplications@grps.org. And again, this will all be on the webpage. From that point, the board will review the applicants and we will narrow the list down next Monday in our work session to determine who to interview. Those interviews will take place at a special work session on the 19th. And at the end of that day with those interviews, there will be someone selected to be appointed to complete Ms. Grant's two years on the board. So I think everyone has heard the criteria that we're seeking. And again, that is available as early as now. And again, that will close on December 10th at 12:00 PM. So otherwise, any thoughts or anything about this piece before we go ahead and move to our public comment?
That's 12:00 PM as in noon, or are we doing?
12:00 noon.
Is it possible to extend this to the end of the workday or extend it to 11:59 PM? I think that noon is kind of abrupt and most things like this, people often get to the end of the business day.
I was intentional to try to give you our time to review the materials, but by all means, if you don't feel like you need as much time. It is Saturday. So, but yeah, that's 11:59. So you just use Sunday to review them?
That's not enough time. Okay, no.
And then the other piece though, with the noon though.
Noon on Saturday.
Yeah. And the other piece too was in the unlikely event that someone didn't have access to electronic email, we're going to have someone here at the district office receiving a physical packet. And obviously, I think we wanted that to be at a relatively reasonable time as well. So, yeah. Okay, if we don't have any, you have a question or comment? Oh, if we don't have any other questions or comments about that, we will move to our public comment for non-agenda items. And as we read a few names here.
If I can.
Please. No, get out the way.
I have a system.
Yeah, I'm sorry. She has a system.
Just one more day.
Yes.
I'm going to need to do a timer.
Okay.
All right, so we are going, we have a few public comment individuals. I will go ahead and call each of you right now. If you can join us down at the front and then one by one make your statement. A few notes about public comment. You have three minutes for your public comment. The board is unable to respond at this time, but we are taking notes about the public comment that is being stated. And if your comment calls for it, we'll make sure that we reach back out to you. We have Willow West Brenner, Deandre Jones, and Lilly Chang Schultz.
Quite a few. We just called a few down at a time.
Oh, I'm sorry, Marta Johnson as well.
Slide in front of one of the microphones will be. Somebody was before me. Well, you're there, it's okay. All right. Thank you for your courtesy though.
I guess I'll go first then. First of all, I wanted to say, Ms. Grant, if you look at my comment card, I actually put public comment when you guys had the first public comment for agenda items. If you check my card and I didn't get that six minutes that I wanted to speak, but I'll take my three minutes. But how you doing everybody? My name is Deandre Jones. I'm here to speak about the facilities plan. Mr. Baker, I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to let me know about this because I went to by the Adelante High School or tried to get it off you guys' hands. I just recently checked out a property with the Kent County Commissioner, Republican Dan Burrow from, that serves in Granville. I went to an old school in Granville. I checked that out. I'm ready to create equity. I'm ready to chase this sustainable renewable energy vision that can change and transform the world. I believe it. I believe the energy, the passion, the unmatched energy that I have. I'm also a semi-pro basketball player. I had a double-double in my last game. So I think I put in a lot of good energy and I'm a really good person. But I'm ready to chase this vision. I've knocked on 100 doors and apartments up there by the Adelante High School. I can't remember the apartments' names because I've been so busy, but I've knocked on a lot of doors. I've engaged in that community. And I would like to build a community center. If I have to do a community benefit agreement, I would just love to be, say that I will always be authentic. I'll always be myself. So sometimes I may say crazy passionate things or you may see crazy passionate things, but I'm always going to be the same person to who I am to the core. I would love to develop an esports training facility. I would like to, also, I was a part of the neighborhood promise. My car broke down, so I couldn't go to the career and training and talk about careers and just different things for STEM and STEAM technology and different things that I want to do. But I got a new car and any meeting or any event that you guys have that I can come and engage and continuously speak about my vision and let people know. And I'm here in the community. I'm not hard to find. I would love to talk to you guys about getting that facility off your hands so I can chase this vision and really create equitable change. It's the Second World City for Economic Development. According to Forbes, I've been in Forbes. I feel like I can make the Forbes list and I got the passion. And I would love to serve this community. I would love to serve the youth. I would love to have that meeting with Kent Johnson about talking about esports because that got canceled and I would love to get on the agenda to speak about that because I gave a presentation to Kent District Libraries. And our libraries is just toward the only facility for esports in West Michigan. And now they're looking to host esports tournaments for our district libraries and they're going to be building esports labs in our libraries. So there's no reason that the school district shouldn't be behind them when we have kids that can literally make six figures, be rich, have a career training because sports is only, so, you know, kids can sit down and play video games and take care of their family and not have the risk of injury. Everybody won't make it to the NBA or the NHL or those major things. So it's being able to give kids an alternative, something that they're passionate about, something that we can do now because those opportunities weren't available when I was in middle school. Those opportunities weren't available when I was in elementary. Those opportunities weren't available when I was in high school. But we can create those opportunities now. We can create environmental justice and actually help the property value up in the Black Hills and give those kids and those people in the community something to look forward to, something to be passionate about, something to love, something to hold on to because there's not a lot of opportunity here. I know all of the programs.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. You have three minutes. Thank you very much.
Willow West? So as most of the board members know, me and my friend Willow have started a petition to bring back our teacher, Riz. And.
Willow, if you would just hand those to her over there, she'll hand them to us, please. Thank you.
And we're going to be presenting that today. We've gotten quite a few signatures.
Right. Jose, your comment is just that you're presenting the signatures?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Excuse me.
Lilly?
Hello, it's good to see you after the last time I've been here was four and a half years ago. And I think everyone looks exactly the same. So yeah, what brings me here after four and a half years is I think something that obviously would be very important. I come in solidarity with a lot of people in the public. I am the founder, not just of the discipline team, but also of Speak Up GR, which has over 4,000 members. And the concern publicly is that with the filling out, the process for filling out the open seat, the public feels that there was this huge election that just happened and that that seat should have been made available sooner and that there were record number of voters and even the person who came in six out of, I forget how many candidates was that? Over 10 or something? Still had over 10,000 votes, which is significant. And, you know, I thank you all for all your hard work of being here on Monday evenings for month after month and over the years. And I hope that one thing you'll consider is in the heart of the public, what they really care about is the integrity and the fairness that if you listen to the people in the public, they feel very strongly that this open seat should just really go to the sixth, the next highest vote getter. And that's just how it feels to most of the people in the public. It feels like that would be the fear thing, the thing of integrity. And so I hope you will consider that strongly. You know, however you do it, whether it's through an application or just give that sixth person a strong consideration because they were very highly embraced by the public. And, you know, I think in our hearts, we all feel like many in the public feel that that is the right thing to do. And also in solidarity, you may have received an email from Ivan Diaz, who is newly, who has been elected to the Kent County Commission. And have you received that email yet? Or if not, may I read it very quickly in solidarity?
You have six seconds.
Six seconds? Okay. Well, he says his name's Ivan Diaz. He's newly elected Kent County Commissioner, District 20. He's reaching out in regards to the open seat and he believes that, he believes that the board for the opportunity to reform the appointment process for the board when an opening occurs to make it more democratic. He says, "I believe that the board should appoint the person with the next most amount of votes based on the most recent election," and it was very recent.
Thank you.
So I hope you consider that process.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Is that it? So that concludes.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. I'm so sorry. You're sitting to the side. We have one more comment.
Hello, I don't know if you can hear me, if these are working yet. But hi, my name is Marta. I have come and I've. I have come and I've spoken before about air quality, indoor air quality. I, the reason I'm wearing a Space Force mask is because I have a high-risk daughter who, if she gets sick, it can lead to a lot of complications that could include like brain surgery because she has a shunt or other complications related to her many diagnoses. And also, it, it made me very concerned about the pandemic and I was really grateful for the leadership that the district made to try to, you know, open safely and keep kids in mind. And now that our hospitals are full again with a lot of different things, I'm really hoping that we can more prioritize indoor air quality. I am really grateful that I've been able to talk at my school with some of the leadership and have folks looped in. And there is consideration and I'm grateful for Alex Smart and Matthew Beresford, you know, addressing my concerns. I think I am really, most concerned right now about indoor air quality in the cafeterias where my, my child has to have her mask off in order to consume food. And so I'm hoping that not only at my school, but at all the schools, that every school can have, start having data monitoring for the indoor air quality to be able to test whether some of the ionization technology that was selected, which isn't as reliable as HEPA filtration, can, can be judged to see if it's working or not. And then have additional HEPA filtration installed. And then start also monitoring how indoor air quality is working in some of these classrooms as well. It's important not only for our COVID cold and flu and RSV season that we're apparently going to have maybe every year in, in different forms, to be able to reduce illnesses and make schools more accessible and inclusive to immune-compromised and medically complex kids. But it also has a lot of other benefits and the more events I participate from, you know, the White House Clean Indoor Air, or Clean Indoor Air Buildings Challenge to other initiatives, I just had a meeting today with the Sierra Club and a bunch of other organizations that are basically being able to layer sustainability and climate goals with indoor air quality, which is a really important collaborative initiative. But it improves the experience and quality of life for children. They have tied it to improved cognitive function, they've, for improved indoor air quality, to improve sleep and improved emotional well-being. And I think that when it comes down to some of the values that I've been hearing in a lot of these strategic planning meetings, which gives me so much hope for our district, when we think about making education a joyful experience, about making it a pleasure to come into school, something that everybody, from teachers to students, are excited about, indoor air quality is kind of like this silent underpinning that helps support all of these other experiences that people have. And I, I hope and I encourage the board, I know a lot of you are outgoing, but to embrace indoor air quality is, I don't know if it's an agenda item, but to increase resources to this and educate not only yourselves, but make it more of a priority to support within the district itself. I think there, there is, you know, willingness, but I think it needs more resources.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, very much. Okay, so that does exhaust our public comment for the evening, that brings us to superintendent comments.
So thank you again to our outgoing board members. It's bittersweet, I, you were the people who hired me. And so I am always appreciative and grateful for that and having this experience. I am looking forward to learning new colleagues, but you know, once you get used to people, it's like, okay, now you have to kind of get used to, to new people. And so I just wish you the very best in your endeavors, wherever those may take you. I know that you'll continue to support GRPS as a community member as we continue to move our work forward. And also, I just want to thank our, our scholars, both Sammy and Alicia. They have been just a beam of light and energy as they have helped lead the work with our scholar advisory and also kind of pushing that conversations back into their schools. And so I just want to thank them as they give me hope for continued leadership as you're coming behind the work that all of us more seasoned people are doing. So just thank you.
With that, any closing comments from, from Ms. Leggett?
It's just been an honor to serve on this with all of you. I'm gonna miss seeing some of your faces, I know. All of them, but yes, it's just been an honor to be up here with all of you and speak for the students of GRPS.
Ms. Mohammed?
Yeah, same for me, like, I really like coming here, it's like fun, like getting to meet you guys and like, just like participate in the meetings, so I like it.
Thank you. Reverend Matthias, any, oh, literally closing comments, huh, almost, yeah, totally.
Yeah, it has been quite a privilege to be able to serve nine and a half years. I do think the process is good, I was, I was one of the candidates that, that you voted for. I do think that the board has the insight to see what it, what it needs in that sense. But it has been quite a ride to champion, not just, you know, for, for the teachers and the students, but really demanding that the schools better graduate students that really impact our world. We continue to have a long way to go, but it's been a pleasure working with the cabinet, various degrees of the cabinet, to our new superintendent, certainly my colleagues here. We have argued many different times and have disagreed and, but have always, as it says on our table, to, to really look at what our students need and our, and our teachers need. And so that's really critical. I really want to encourage parents to continue to have your voice heard, come to these meetings, if not, email. But, but let your voice be heard, certainly we are paying more attention to our students as well. So again, it's been a privilege for my family, we put four through GRPS. They're all college graduates and, and so that's a stamp that we believed in the school district. We took them out of private education in order to put them in, in public. And so that's really critical, I think, to, to champion. It is a risk, no doubt, and we're in a very different time in terms of our schools. So there's a lot of risks that I'm concerned about. But again, I have confidence that, that the board and certainly the elected board will, will definitely look at those issues. And so again, it's been my privilege to, to serve you, our constituents, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lewis?
Yes, I'd like to say goodbye to our young folks over here. I'd also like to thank John and Christian and Jose and Tony, I'd like to thank you. You've made me think, you've taught me a lot of new stuff that I hadn't thought about before. I'm very grateful for our friendships and for the way you welcomed me and taught me a great deal about a world that perhaps I wasn't as familiar with as I might have been. But I would also like to say a special thank you to Tony and his brilliance of starting the museum school because my oldest granddaughter will be graduating in the spring from museum and my little one is in the ninth grade and they're having a good experience. And so thank you for thinking of that, Tony.
Brilliant.
Yes, that's right, thank you.
Ms. Grant? You'd like to wait?
Can I do that one more time?
We'll go to Ms. Williams then.
Well, I want to say I am in awe of those young artists that put forth artwork. I tell you, I'm looking at the pictures and I'm just like, I don't think I could do that right now. So to see their work, I was just in awe. So I am extremely appreciative of the staff that work with them as well as their families. And then I do want to just be, bid a farewell to our colleagues that are, are leaving and not returning. I appreciate your leadership and your dedication to GRPS and I look forward to working with you in your new endeavors.
Ashaki?
Oh, there's so much to say and not enough time to say goodbyes, they're, they're hard. And I will miss you, to my colleagues who are leaving. I am a better person, no question, and a wiser person because of the impact that each of you have had on me. So it is with sadness that we bid you farewell, I bid you farewell. But many of you, all of you, moving on to new and exciting endeavors, whether in politics or in your own lives. And I'm so excited and proud to watch where all of you go from here. I've so valued just the camaraderie that exists on this board, despite the fact that we don't always agree. And that I could so trust that no matter whether we agreed, the intent was what was best for scholars and staff and GRPS. And that is a really special thing to have as you lead on a board of education. So thank you to my colleagues who have always kept that at the forefront of their decision-making. Gosh, I could say so much, I won't take up more time about each and every one of you. But just thank you for the investments you made in me and in Grand Rapids Public Schools, we are better because of you.
Dr. Flores?
Well, it is certainly bitter and sweet as I depart from this group. Let me say, first of all, that I do appreciate all of the relationships that we've had, the respect of collegiality that we have, even though sometimes we don't agree or we banter. It is, it is because I have served this district for over 30 years as a, as a teacher and as an administrator in the district, serving in a number of capacities, that I ran for the board. Because I believe that the Board of Education is, is that central group that can bring about change. And I think we as individuals who want a better society and better education for our children need to embrace change. And we need to continue to be committed to futuristic ideas that will improve our district and the livelihood of all of the residents of Grand Rapids, regardless of what their color or their religion or their, or their backgrounds are. And we have to be changemakers in that process. And so as I leave into, into real retirement, if you will, from, from education, does not mean that I will not continue to advocate for the children of this district because I believe in Grand Rapids and I believe in you students. There is no reason that you, we should be producing a servant society for our children. The fact that we are of a different color or different nationality or different backgrounds, we should not be in subservient positions in this, in this society. And so we have to make that difference. And so as I leave this district, I believe that we have contributed to making it more transparent, more responsive, and that we have improved the, the high quality of leadership that we have. We evidenced that tonight in, in, in giving our, our superintendent, Dr. Roby, a highly effective rating because she's highly effective and this district is moving forward in the right direction. And we have to continue to, to provide our district highly competent, highly qualified individuals to lead us into the future. So I thank you very much to the public who voted for me initially and then voted to reelect me. And I believe two terms is enough, if it was good enough for George Washington and the rest of the presidents, it's good enough for me.
Ms. Davis?
Well, tonight was just a great night overall, we have so many good things happening from the choir singing when we came in to the artwork and the Christmas card and the Turkey Trot update, I mean, just a lot of great things. Dr. Roby, you definitely deserve that highly effective rating and, and so that's a wonderful celebration as well. And I didn't even think I had a time to plan to speak to my colleagues that are leaving, but I just so appreciate all four of you. Man, public should know that these four people just advocate for your kids nonstop. All very different, but I appreciate each of your voices so much and I've learned so much from you in my four years with you. And I will have your voices in my head as we move forward when we're making decisions as well. So thank you so much for all your work, such an asset to our district. And you will be greatly missed. And I consider Dr. Baker like a mentor to me in this avenue, so thank you so much for guiding me through this process.
Tony's gonna cry.
I promise my, the length of my comments will be relative to the length of time I was on the board. Unlike, Dr. Flores, I think the length of time that Franklin Roosevelt gave to the country is more commensurate. But if I do, if you do the math and add up the four, this like nearly 40 years of service to the board, the four of us leave. And I think that that says a lot about us, but it says a lot about this district that we're welcome. And I think that that's true across the board, that there's people here that have been here for the long haul. I'm gonna tell three quick stories, I hope they're quick, you hope they're quick. When I first, I was teaching at Ferris and I decided to buy a house here in Grand Rapids and I would ask people about where I should move, my colleagues in Big Rapids would discourage me from moving into Grand Rapids. They said that there weren't schools there and I said, well, my kids are three and one. So I knew that there were really good elementary and preschool programs because I'd already looked into it. And this colleague said to me, yeah, but highs, the high schools aren't so good. And I was like, my kids are three and one. They, you know, they got a while before they're gonna get to high school. And I, and I just, the audacity to me that we would live in a community and not do all we can to allow other people's children to go to a school that wasn't, and it wasn't true. But, but even if it was true, the idea that we are going to allow other people's children to go to school. So I knew that I was gonna live in this city and I knew that I was going to work to improve the schools. So several years later, I got an opportunity to do that by getting elected to, to here. So 14 years ago, 2008, George Bush was president for the, for the, the Blanford kids, that was a long time ago. And at that time, I got on the board because I, like I said, I cared about the schools, I thought I had some skills. I wanted to figure out how to contribute to the community and the schools and the kids. And, but I didn't know what was gonna happen. And on this board, in this, in this very seat, for years, the idea that you could advocate for teachers and children at the same time was considered an oxymoron. Teachers were pitted against their children when Jose was teaching at the high school, teachers were pitted against their children. And, and there were times, and actually there were years of being in this room, that if you advocated for teachers, you felt hostility in the room. 14 years later, fortunately, our society has moved past that, although we're still bearing the consequences of that. In the, in the intervening years, so much collaboration, so much community, the museum school and Dale Robertson, my friend is here. But an enormous amount of public and, and community participation has led to this. Colleagues on the board, certainly all the people here and pretty much everybody else that was here before them, you know, worked together to, to make this district. And I feel so happy and so proud that I was so much a part of so much, so many good changes. And I still feel disappointed that we didn't do more. One thing that I, I want to say about what makes me proud the most is that I brought all of me to this district. Those that know me, my family, my colleagues at Ferris, my friends here in the community, that the first question that I always did and considering what decisions, big life decisions would how, would affect the work that I do on this board. And, and, and my children sat in this room when they were eight and five while I was at an academic achievement committee meeting. And now they're graduated from college or going to grad school. This district is, this district, this work has been the most significant of my life, other than raising my family. So I thank you so much, it will always be part of me, thank you.
Sure, well, hard to follow that one up, Ms. Grant, you should have waited.
I know, I should have gone earlier. I want to say that I started this work when I was 28. And so the youngest board member that we had, and I was, I was a kid who, who cared about our kids. And I've met so many people who also care about our kids. And as has been said so many times, we don't always agree, but it becomes clear really quickly who really. But it becomes clear really quickly who really cares. And so we need the community to keep showing up, to keep caring, to keep voicing how you feel. I'm sorry.
You deserve a good cry. That's okay, dear. Just go ahead.
Because our kids deserve it. They deserve for us to show up for them every day. And the district is evolving right now. It's such an important time where things are changing. And I feel so honored to see things that were not possible when I joined the board happening today. To be talking about opportunities and to be reevaluating the assets that we have, things that we once treated as liabilities, now we are seeing the value. That brings me so much joy. And although I am so sad to be leaving, I will miss you guys. I'm sure you guys won't miss me calling you all the time, asking, how do you feel about this? Where are you, where do you stand on these issues? But I'm excited to go continue another level of this work. And so I won't be a stranger. I truly have respect for each and every one of you. And it takes a lot, it takes a lot to show up every single Monday. I was thinking about that. I've been here almost every Monday for the past six years. And some Tuesdays and some Wednesdays, some Sundays, some Saturdays. It takes a lot. So although it's important for us to hold our elected officials accountable, it's also so important to show up with them and walk beside them, to hear the different sides of things, to not just read a Facebook post and think that you know everything about an issue, but to assume that the people who are spending a good chunk of their lives here are doing what they truly believe is good work until they prove to you that they haven't. And to say, have you thought about this viewpoint? Or do you know how this has affected my family? Without assuming that people are intentionally not doing what you think is best, is best because we truly lay it all on the line, you know, with each other and, and for this work. And you guys have some amazing work ahead. And I'm really excited to see where you take the district. I may show up for my three minutes. But, but I am truly honored to have been here for the past six years. Thank you.
Well, I think the only thing I'm going to do is ask you to join me in a standing ovation for these four. And I guess actually with that, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much for joining us tonight.